Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is born. On my mission, my God, it is a rule of liberty and justice for all.
Do you please call the roll?
No.
Here.
Ross. Uh Ben Yosef.
Here.
Sal.
Here.
Orson.
Here.
Chayer.
Here.
Agwol.
Here.
Okay, do we have any correspondence?
No.
It's one of those nights.
Is there a full moon?
I just wanted to be weird.
Alright, I feel like I say this at every meeting, maybe I'm gonna keep continuing it. The crazy that we're already November, I've only done like four of these, but it feels like I'm just like constantly doing them. Alright, so November, like I said, happy to be here. Um, for this one, I remember the last time I talked about that transition period when we're still kind of going through that right now. So in terms of going into the future, in terms of like sports, not gonna have too much of sports right now. Although, um, our girls swimming and diving did win state over the weekend, which is awesome for them, they got first place, I know. So I decided to throw that in there for them, cuz such amazing performance out of them, they always do great, but awesome. So moving forward, I know the last time I talked a lot about why students join clubs, that's a big like present moment, students living in the present. How do they find what clubs right for them right now? This one, I'm gonna do a kind of the opposite, I'm gonna look towards the future. How do Stevenson students look towards the future? So I know usually I wait till the end and then I give you the big aha moment. This time, I'm gonna give you in the beginning, just have that through your head, how students look towards the future, I'm gonna be touching on that as we go through. Alright, starting for this one, different like culture events and collaboration events we have here. If you look at the top left there, that was NHSDA and the German Honor Society, they collabed and they did an excellent job learning the Rhinlinder dance. So just two different things collabing there. To the right photo, I think I was gonna do one with students, but I'm pretty sure I was hungry when I added these photos. That's why I did the guacamole one, I mean, it, it looks awesome there. Um, but Lasso hosted a guacamole contest and as you can see, the guacamole looks great, I would have loved to have been able to go there. Uh, if you looked in the bottom left, that's for Dia de los Muertos, that's face painting, that was from our NSHS, which is a National Spanish Honor Society. Lasso also did that, and it was with Stevenson backstage in Odyssey. So I know I mentioned Odyssey in a lot of these events and how they collab with different things, but that was awesome to see that. For Halloween, how they did the face painting there, I mean, you can see, it just looks so cool. And in the bottom right, we have French Honor Society, they had their French week, which is a bunch of fun activities like crate making, they did chalk the walk, and they did French trivia. So kind of what do you look for for the future in this? This is looking for the future for their club, this is collaborating their clubs, broadening the scope of their clubs for other people. By doing these collaboration efforts, it brings students together, aways raises awareness for both clubs, and helps to grow that and look towards the future of their clubs by growing how involved they are. That's through our cultural events. Moving on, competitions, top left there, you look at Stevenson Debate Team, they hosted the Illinois Congressional Debate Association, they earned first place overall as a school. Seniors to the right there, not much of a competition, but I thought I'd add it anyway. There's a Spark Program, which obviously we host over the summer and do things, but this was the final thing where they got to present their findings, so whether it be teachers, other junior peer students, or family, anything like that, and just so much dedication, hard work towards what they're going for and how they could present that awesome for them. Statesmen in the bottom left, they recently attended the Kettle Marine Press Association Fall Journalism Conference. That was at the University of Wisconsin Whitewater. And for that, they got only the one of two newspapers and the prestigious All Kemper Rating and took home first place for their website. If you can see Mr. Gobble there, he also won Administrative of the Year for the Kemper Award, so there's that as well, yes, yes. I thought I'd, thought I'd throw that in, but um, awesome that I.
They let them write whatever they want.
Yeah, yeah, it was awesome that Statesmen went there and were able to do such amazing things that they do. Alright, bottom right, finally, the Stevenson Model UN team, they were recognized as one of the top schools for the Carl Sandberg High School Mun Conference, Munzo Model UN. And that is one of the most competitive events in the Chicagoland area, so amazing that they're recognized there. And what do you see at the competitions? Obviously, a lot of these clubs are very competitive clubs, whether it be things like day debate, Model UN. And whether it be whatever club it is, people join clubs certain times to look into their future. Whether it be statesmen, something like journalism, debate teams, something like law, political science, any route like that. People pick these clubs for the future, they pick these competitions cuz they love doing it and they love doing it for the future. So that's the reason that a lot of students join these competitive clubs, is looking towards their future and looking towards what can they do beyond Stevenson, beyond their just high school experience. Moving on, class trips, Life by Design class in the photo left there. They had a day at Sunrise Camp, where there was a free summer camp that was dedicated to children diagnosed with cancer in their siblings. So they did different hands-on experiences and got to really experience things like that. To the right of that, the Business Absent Tax had an amazing trip to Dave and Buster's, um, that machine there, which, you know, seems impossible to run its, when it's gotta be rigged. Um, but they had, they could hear from executive team member about how it's like to run a business. Students from the Marketing Class to the right there, they had a marketing class, they went to the Chicago Wolves Hockey Team at Allstate Arena. During their visit, they heard from a panel of a team of executives about how it's like to run a hockey thing and the behind the scenes and everything that contributes to going on through that. Bottom la- bottom uh right, sorry, students in the Entrepreneurial Class recently visited Deerfield Bakery and ABT in Glenview, and they had how different businesses, obviously, once food, once appliances, how the different businesses are run and things like that. Finally, bottom middle, our culinary students had an incredible hands-on experience when they got to go to the Eloa Farms, and that's where they got to learn sustainable growing and practices with that, so great for our culinary students. So when you look at these class trips as a whole, once again, it may stick out to you about, all of these are generally electives which students take. Your core classes can travel places, but a lot of times it's the electives that go places, which are students, obviously, that we have a choice to do. And for that, we're picking electives that help shape towards our future and how we go into about that, how we pick what we wanna do. Once again, looking towards the future. I wanna touch on that October 21st, that was Talk About Your Future Night. Also, junior course selection, happening right now, so many junior people come up to me, should I take AP Lit? No, but anyway. Don't take that class, um, but yeah, junior course selection is obviously happening a lot right now. Yeah, um, junior course selection is obviously happening a lot right now with everything that's going on. And so, amazing that students are thinking towards the future, not just of right now. Um, yeah, and when I was thinking about this, what is the most preparation for the future? What thing prepares students the most for the future? That brought me to Tech Campus, something that I don't know too much about, but that it's amazing that we have this, and when learning about it, I loved learning about it. And I thought it'd be amazing to showcase it here. So Dr. Cusable, I know you went to this event, um, this was for the Mash Casualty Incident Drill. And this is where students from different fields like law enforcement, firefighting, EMS, biomedical, and cosmetology, they could have their real world experience in different hands-on scenarios. So you can see there's firefighting there, there's people in a lab, and just the real hands-on learning experience that they can get from Tech Campus is something that's amazing. Something that I feel like was amazing to showcase here. Further talking about Tech Campus in terms of what's going on into the future, this fall, there was a field trip to Tech Campus for new students interested in exploring courses for the upcoming school year. And there was a bunch of participants that went there, and I just kinda wanna give you a scope of what Tech Campus looked like. For the 23-24 season, they had 55 people that completed Tech Campus. 24-25 season, it was 67 people that completed Tech Campus. For the 25-26 season, there were 73 people that are currently taking Tech Campus right now. And for the 26-27 season, 77 students signed up as of November 11th. There's an estimate that 125 will enroll and 100 will complete. So you can see, that's going on an upward trend, which I think is just amazing. Because a lot of times what's focused right now is a lot of colleges looking towards the future, what's colleges, what's happening with that. But there's an entirely different path that these students take with Tech Campus, maybe they don't go to college, maybe they go right into the career field right outside of high school, which is an awesome experience that we can allow our students to go to Tech Campus and enjoy that. So my Meet Me Monday is related to that. This is Dami Garcia, she is a second-year cosmetology student at Tech Campus. She's in the morning schedule, so she takes a van in the morning at CLC, comes back to Stevenson around fifth period. Last year, she did the afternoon session at first, and then she left at 12:20 and then went thereafter. The reason she joined this program was actually from a friend, she heard from a friend about Tech Campus, about all the amazing things, and she wanted to try it out. When I asked her actually why she did, she said, honestly, it was kind of something that I chose out of the blue. I didn't even know what I was getting into, but cosmetology is what I, what I'm into, I'm very into skincare and all that stuff. So I mean, it was a really good decision that I made it. So obviously, she didn't think that she'd go into cosmetology, she knows she likes that. But she tried this out because of a friend and just cuz she was trying to see how it was, and this is something, when talking to her, she really had a passion for and loved doing. When I said what was really cool about the program and the CLC and what it offers, she said, cosmetology for job fairs, they have like hair salons, where people like Tricoshie, hopefully I said that correct, um, come in and they give you a rundown on the steps of how to build a future hair salon. Or if you're looking for a job, you can sign applications there actually, and it gives you an opportunity to expand your career. I thought that was amazing that different people can come to the CLC, you can have literal different jobs that you might be working for in the future come there. You can fill out an application right there, learning from real-world people about how to run a business, how to do a job, that's just awesome. When I said, how does it prepare you for the future, she, she said, giving you a taste of what it could be like to go into this career that you may be interested, and it gives you the knowledge that you need. I believe I see myself in five years from now, hopefully obtaining my license, I wanna grow and make up my own hair salon. Knowing that I wanna pursue more than just here, I wanna learn what it takes to make up skincare and make my own business. So obviously, Dami Garcia is very looking into cosmetology for the future. And I wanna keep in mind, she said that she didn't know what she wanted to do, she didn't know. But clearly, Tech Campus has impacted her so much to now, five years' time, she wants to be an entrepreneur, building her own business, which I think is amazing for a Stevenson student, because it's not honestly not talked about too much. Like I said, that college path is often a lot more emphasized, but there's this Tech Campus path that's so much important. Now, like I said, why am I talking about all this? Junior course selection coming around, talked about the present in the last meeting, this one I'm talking about the future. Stevenson students, it's amazing here, that even though they're in their high school career, they going through so much right now, we're always looking for the future. And you guys prepare us so well in different things we have, whether it be things like clubs, or Tech Campus, or any of the sort. So thank you guys for being able to help us in our future career, and not just focus on what's going on in high school, but focus on what we're doing outside of high school, how can we improve as a person and how can we grow and meld into society, that's beyond Stevenson High School. The fact that we can do that is just awesome, and it's amazing that students can look into the future and have such vast opportunities that we do here. So thank you guys, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for highlighting that, that's something we don't hear often, and I, I had the opportunity to tour the campus as well once, and it, it really is pretty amazing.
Yeah.
It provides a lot of opportunities for students that many don't know about, so I appreciate that you took the time and.
Well, I thought it actually made. Yeah, it's such a cool experience.
Crushed it.
We had some, some other, so some other activities the past weekend. I think Don had said you had a chance to see the musical.
Yes, I uh had a chance to see the musical yesterday, um, the matinee. It's not the first performance that I've seen from Patriot Theater Company, um, but as usual, it was absolutely astounding. I mean, my hats off, compliments to the entire crew, uh, the actors, the musicians, the production design people. I was thoroughly amazed by the, the level of preparation, the entertainment. At one point in intermission, um, the actor who was playing Mary Poppins, it was Mary Poppins, was, was walking in front of the stage during intermission, and there were little children getting their picture taken with her like it was Disney World. There, there was a number where, I'm sure you and you guys know this already, but I had no idea that I was going to see an actor suspended from wires singing upside down to an auditorium full of people. I didn't even know we were capable of doing that here. I was absolutely floored by the production, so everyone who was involved in that, and I'm talking to people on YouTube, if you're watching on YouTube, you should evangelize like the Patriot Theater productions and go to the community and get people to come here, because what they're doing is just amazing, so.
It was about 180 kids, I think, total involved with the music and the backstage and all the people on stage. And I actually even heard that, um, Mr. Gobble himself was teaching a physics class while flying through the air.
We actually have video, we have video of Mr. Gobble.
There is video of flying, uh.
Somebody had a test.
Just as we're on that, this year, we changed what Odyssey looks like in a lot of ways, and so our goal is to do Odyssey activities all the time. Art in your life, when does it happen? And it was a great opportunity for the arts to interact with our engineering and physics classes, and talk about what it means to be suspended up in those spaces, and fit right in with the curriculum of physics classes. Uh, there were teachers that flew every single period, physics teachers, uh, talking a little bit about what was going on, it was, um, it's just another idea of how Odyssey can live throughout, how the arts can live throughout our school all the time, so it was really cool.
Thank you for sharing.
Thanks, no, it, it was awesome, it, it was, I just couldn't believe the level of singing and acting and it was Mary Poppins. Like it, like the movie.
Great, well, thank you. Do we have any visitor statements tonight? Okay.
Okay, uh, well, tonight, uh, we have the present, their annual presentation of the Student Achievement Report, and Tony and Ted are here to do that, and um, you do have a hard copy of it as well, um, in front of you, so gentlemen, take it away.
Alright, uh, I'm Tony.
We coordinated today.
Yeah, we coordinated, yeah, we got the blue pants, great top.
Nice.
Uh, but welcome everybody, uh, again, this, the, the purpose of the Student Achievement Report, uh, just a reminder, this is a achievement for our students from last school year, so I know we spent some time talking about this at the administrative team retreat in August, uh, but again, another opportunity for us to celebrate our students and all the work, uh, that the faculty and staff and the team here at Stevenson has accomplished.
Yeah, and you have a hard copy in front of you, in the bottom right will be the pages that the data corresponds to, it's not gonna look the same, but when you get the PowerPoint, this in the bottom right will be the pages that it corresponds to. The thing in front of you is far more comprehensive than what you're gonna see here, we decided to kind of expand our data set, uh, to give you a better view of what our students are doing and capable of doing, so, uh, here we go. Uh, we're gonna start with enrollment, just kind of as a baseline, um, we are continue to grow. Uh, we ended in the 24-25 at 47.59, we are hovering around the 48 hundreds right now. Um, so this will, this number will pop up kind of as a context for our AP numbers here in a second. Um, we're gonna start with classroom performance. Our grade distribution, uh, used to follow the bell curve, okay, so you can picture the bell curve. Uh, we now follow a, a left skewed data set, which is much more in line with a competency-based grading system, uh, which is what we follow in our evidence-based agency stuff, that will come back, I'll show you that distribution. So when you look at this, you will see that there's far more As, um, but that is not that we're just throwing out As, that is backed up by our numbers with ACT and SAT, which I'll show you in a second. So we have a more left skewed data set, uh, we've kind of busted the bell curve. Uh, the bell curve is based on a quota, not on student potential, uh, so now we are much more in line with student potential and our evidence of that. So I'll come back to that in a second. Um, this is our grade distribution, we always show, you can look at this more in depth, uh, by division, um, but again, uh, that bell curve, uh, is starting to go away. We now have a proficiency distribution, so we do grade on exceeds, meets, approaching, so we have a multi-year trend that we can finally see. Uh, so we hover around, you know, three-quarters of our, our students, uh, get that meets ultimately, uh, as their final proficiency score, some one, some two combined, so these are kind of the exceeds, meets, approaching, developing in our grade book, the, the total scores, that's the distribution. And this is how it looks by division, so you can explore that a little bit later, we're not gonna go through in detail. Um, alright, so, uh, before we move to our agency-focused teaching and learning, before we move to our evidence-based, uh, competency-based grading, uh, we follow the bell curve, if you look at our grade distribution and our GPA, it was like the top. Uh, again, the bell curve is based on quota, it ignores student potential, it assumes that most kids are Bs and Cs, and reserves the As for just those special cases, we didn't want that. We wanted evidence of competence, and if a kid showed that, we wanted to give him that A, and then he earned it. Now, you might think, hey, a lot more As, we're just giving out As, that's grade inflation, but all of this is backed up by those third-party exams. So our AP numbers, better than ever, our ACT, ACT numbers, better than ever. So if you look at our outside metrics, our kids are competent, and that competency is growing. So the evidence that we're getting from our classes, uh, and what the kids are doing in their classes is holding up by those third-party metrics. So, um, uh, yeah, so, uh, if you look at some of these, uh, just to point out and then we'll move on, our, at the, our distribution in our APs, we used to have, um, fours and fives, around 55% of our, of our, uh, AP scores were fours and fives in the past. Now it's around 75% are fours and fives in our AP distribution. And this past year in 24-25, it was 79%. Um, before we moved to the agency-based and evidence-based, we had around 15 perfect scores in our ACT. Um, when we moved to full in on what we do now, it's average each year about 25 perfect scores in our ACT. So our teachers executing perfectly in the class, what we're asking to do, is leading to this. So, um, I just wanted to hover on the slide a little bit more because I wanted to celebrate the work our teachers are doing, and what our kids are, uh, 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 doing in the class and what they're doing outside the class, so, uh, awesome to everybody. Uh, Ted, this is.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I lo- I love that, uh, I think, you know, like, that's something that we hear often, it's like, oh, there's grade inflation and, you know, like, that, that community myth that's out there, I think what Tony just described is, uh, exactly what we were hoping for, is that the data that we have in our grade book matches what we see in our state exams and our college level experiences. So I'm just gonna, kind of briefly talk through, uh, last year was our first year of giving the ACT after many, many years of the SAT. Um, and the ACT is something that we were all a little bit more familiar with, so I think, um, we probably feel pretty good about that. But we're gonna, when we're talking about the ACT scores, we're gonna be specifically talking about the class of 2026, so this year's graduates. Um, and again, so last year was the first year that we gave the ACT, we gave that in the spring. Um, that group of students and, and moving forward though, will still continue to live in the PSAT world, so we just wrapped that up in October. Um, that, that test is taken their junior year, that's also the national merit test, so it qualifies their students for national merit. Uh, but it also gives us some important data, help intervene for those students, uh, between their junior year and, uh, in the fall versus the spring, we'll talk a little bit about that. So that's just our, our kind of pattern. Um, when we look at the students who take the ACT, so again, it's a state requirement, so all juniors sit for that. Um, but when we were a very heavy ACT state, we know that our students didn't just take the test on the day of the test. They took it during the weekends, leading up to it, their junior year, uh, many of those students use it as practice opportunities, and they take it going into their senior year, so you can kind of see prior to when we, again, were a very ACT-focused state, so 26-17, uh, 15-16, um, not many of our students only took the test on the school day. Last year, so, uh, class 2026 students, 971 of those students only took it one time, uh, school day only. And then you could kind of see, uh, moving on, how many of the students, uh, took the school day and another four ACT tests? Um, there, there's four, four, four of those kids out there.
That used to be more common.
It used to be much more common, you can see, uh, if you go back to like 2015, 16, 38 kids took it, school day plus four. Yeah.
That group, that group right there, the red group, took the SAT multiple times.
Correct.
Cuz that's what they had been prepared for.
Yes, that's what they're familiar with.
We were in over again, so I think as we change.
It'll start to shift.
That number will go back to that eventually.
Yeah, we might see that, or we might also see kids just being happy with the score that they get and, and being good with them.
Well, they come here, we celebrate them when they get a perfect score, and it's, it's shocking how many of them have only taken it once. It's usually somebody asks them how many times they've taken the test.
I think we had 16 on the school day.
Many of them only take it one time, get a perfect score.
Right. Some of us like me took it multiple times. Never got it perfect, not even close. Um, so if we look at our class of 2026, uh, ACT results, so again, this is the day of state-required, uh, testing day, uh, that took place in the spring, you can see that our composite score here at Stevenson was a 25.2. Uh, and if you look at where we were at, uh, that might be a little bit concerning to you, we were at a 26.9, where we were, uh, kind of all in at the ACT, uh, place, uh, before switching over to the SAT. Um, but I, I think, what like just Tony shared about this proficiency model and really, um, you know, encouraging agency in our students, I think what you see here is that regardless of that state test, whether it's an SAT or an ACT, our students still continue to do well. Um, so even though we weren't an ACT state, we, I think what we did is the right work all along the way. Um, you can see that if we look at Illinois's, uh, scores versus Stevenson's, uh, we dropped 1.7 from where we were kind of all in. Um, Illinois, on the other hand, dropped 2.6 points on that, uh, ACT composite score. So we know that there's still some work to do, uh, and we can talk about that in a second, Eric.
Well, I think it's also to Troy's point, I mean, you could look on page 37, the more often the kids take it, the higher the score, the higher the composite will go.
Absolutely, so, yeah, one fact. Absolutely, and we can see that even with that group of kids, right? So if we look here, um, again, if we look at their, their composite scores, the kids who continue to take it more often, there's, there's some diminishing returns. Um, but s- those kids that continue to take it more often, they're going to have overall higher scores. So we know that that's gonna come with practice, uh, we have a lot of teachers, uh, integrating ACT types of learning in their, in their classrooms. Um, we give a practice ACT here at Stevenson in the, in February, end of January, early February. Uh, last year, we had about 400 students take advantage of that, and we kind of capped it at that, not knowing what we were gonna get. This year, we've expanded that to 800 to give more students an opportunity, um, especially when we're looking at this data. Um, again, more students an opportunity to have a practice experience first before that, that official, um, state-required day. So again, when we look here, um, we look at all sittings that a student has, has taken, uh, their composite was a 25.9 versus the school day only is a 25.2. So we know, the more experience that those kids have, um, that, that's, that's gonna just help set them up for, uh, success in the future.
And just a comment about this, we wanted to expand our view beyond just the school day number, there's lots of different groups of kids beyond just the kid, that number of the school day, so, uh, we wanna look at all sittings and kids who just, you know, just weekend scores, or kids who took the school day plus one other. So this is the first time we've expanded just beyond just the school day number, uh, just to give us a more comprehensive view of how our kids are doing on that state test. So that's what you're seeing here. Uh, it's college-level experience, um, we had 688 students in dual-credit courses, 187 in articulated. Uh, those are, uh, high, high numbers, uh, some are highest, we had 27-36 and at least one AP, uh, course this year, and we had our highest, uh, ever AP exam takers at 24-22. Uh, we did extremely well on our, uh, one of our goals, we had 94% of our kids graduate with a college-level experience, uh, which was amazing.
That's the highest of all time.
Of highest of all time, so that's something to celebrate, it's always hovered, you can see around that low 90s and then we had this pop, so we should, uh, celebrate that. Um, uh, what we did this year is we looked at our current state, so these are kids semester one right now. Bless you, so these are current seniors right now in our school, uh, we're hovering around 90% with a college-level experience already. Uh, and if you go back to juniors, we have 85% of our current juniors have a college-level experience. So to be a little bit proactive, what can we do to coach these kids, are they signing up for classes right now, uh, that are college-level experience, so in.
Like AP Lit.
Or, or Tech Campus as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Included in this number. It's working already, it's working already. Um, so yeah, we wanted to be a little proactive to, uh, do this, so we have these, this, this view of our students as well.
What type of opportunities for freshmen are there?
Not many.
Uh, so Project Lead the Way.
Yeah, cuz keep in mind, this is the, isn't always, uh, AP, this is anything that has dual or articulated credit. So like Project, Project Lead the Way courses, engineering courses, freshmen can take, um.
This would have been last year, the AP pre-calc.
That would be the other, that'd be the other.
So that number, that 15% is probably the only class that freshmen, that, that's really, and that only is happening because.
That's just the next course for them.
Those kids started way back in fifth grade.
Right, right.
I started in Stevenson for my first.
Um, yes, yeah. But my guess is almost all of that 15% is pre-calc.
Yeah.
Um, we also started to look at where in what division kids started, uh, started their first college-level experience, so we started to explore this data set. Um, so another way to look at it, like what division are they seeking out their first college-level experience? So we'll continue to build this out over the years, you'll see that, uh, in the data set as well. Um, so where are they trying to find their college-level experience and what year? So this is an exciting new data set to help us help kids and, um, uh, you know, push themselves into those college-level experiences as well. Um, getting into AP, again, we had our highest number of test takers, we had our highest number of exams, over 7,000, um, that was all Ted. Um, we had 67% of juniors and seniors that took at least one exam, Troy and I talked about this at the board retreat, it's kind of stuck in that mid-60s. It did tick up a little bit this year, um, so, uh, that. So, that's a number that needle that we're trying to move up every year, maybe. But this is another look at it, so school enrollment again was forty-seven fifty-nine, that's that bottom number. We had twenty-four, twenty, two thousand four hundred and twenty-four students taking seven thousand exams, again, our highest ever. So, again, I don't know if that's good or bad, but we continue to climb. This is another interesting view, this is our breakdown of how many exams kids take per year. We did see a shift, so we had more kids take exams, so if you look at the bottom row, we were hovering in the fifties. At kids take, in the current year, zero percent, but that went down a little bit, so we had forty-nine percent of our kids take none. But also, we saw the shift in the one, more kids taking three to four exams instead of one to two. So, we did see slight uptick in kids taking three to four exams instead of that one to two range. So, we need to explore that, what do we think about that, so again, just some trends there.
I think we're gonna probably continue to see that with AP pre calc being an option and and what we might explore with some of the new applied arts courses that are possibly offered.
Another look that we added is took the course, no exam, prior to twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-one and prior, it was about half a kid per course didn't take the exam on average, and now it's about one and a half kids per course that don't take the exam. So, we're up in the amount of kids who take the course and then don't take the exam, another interesting data set or data point that we can talk about.
And which one we don't necessarily mind, cause our goal is having the college level experience, not to take the exam.
Right.
Are you capturing any data, like in Student Voice, in terms of why, that's animating those decisions?
I don't want to speak for our teachers, but I know that's that some teachers do that, I think individually, but from my office, no, we don't do that officially, but something.
I will say, many seniors will not take tests because they will realize they've already got all the AP credits that their college will allow them to have. Or the college they're going to won't give them credit, so they cancel their test. Like, some of the kids who would crush it decide not to, just because there's no benefit.
Sure. Do you know how many kids take it and then cancel it?
Not often, I hope, but I can get back to that.
I don't think that. Well, versus just not taking it at all. I can't, it isn't for you.
That is the number, that is, that number is the number of kids who took the course but didn't take the test.
Didn't take it, yeah.
Okay.
So, not canceled score, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Just results overall, we had our highest ever mean score at four point one, so that's something to celebrate. Our, over time, our modal score has gone from four to five, again, something to celebrate, and we had our highest percentage of exams three plus at ninety-five. And we had our highest percentage of students who had at least one score of three plus. Again, this shows when we focus on competency and evidence and agency in our classes and our teachers execute that, and we let our kids own their learning, it it shows when they have to sit for these third-party exams and do that. So, again, we're seeing these these, this growth, which is just amazing, and we should celebrate that. Again, results by division, I just want to highlight most of our tests and test takers come from math and science and social studies, and we see that every year. You can see the mean score and modal score and exams by division there. This is by grade level, we did have extremely high number of exams taken by freshmen, because prior to twenty twenty, it was like around five. So, now it's fifty-eight, and when I looked at it, it was across lots of exams, it wasn't just pre calc, it was just like a lot, like smattering, so, I don't know why this is, but it's just happened. So, it's just an interesting number. I thought it was just gonna be one course, but it wasn't.
Do we, are there other AP courses that freshmen are allowed to take, or is it just?
Well, it's a test, it's not the course, it's the test.
Right, so you're saying that they're taking the test without the course.
Say self-study, yeah.
Yeah, self-study and take the test, so.
Is some of that, like, um kids who are looking to get their seal in a language that we don't offer, do you know as freshmen, or does that happen?
It's like, no, it's more like world history, they've taken the class, and they're like, well, I might try the AP, and some Japanese.
Yeah, I just.
We have a few of those, but most of those kids are a little older, they're.
I think it would be more.
Yeah, I thought it was an error, we verified it three or four times, and it's just shockingly high, so, I don't, we'd have to explore. And then lastly, this was that that really, I think, amazing number. Our distribution on five fours, threes, twos, ones, fours and fives used to hover around fifty percent of our AP distribution every year, going back two thousand eight, two thousand nine, all the way up until twenty twenty-one, and the last three or four years, it's crept up to this year, it like in the seventies, so, the distribution of our fours and fives is in the seventies now of of AP numbers, which is just incredible. So, turn it over to Ted, yeah.
I I think all of that is phenomenal, right, but there are multiple components to the portrait of a graduate. And we'd be remiss not to talk about all the other things that happen in school. So, every month, you have an opportunity to hear from different collaborative teams that are talking about the work that they're doing with students as a result of the Student Voice survey. So, what's amazing is you get to hear those stories from all these collaborative teams. But we also have academic achievement to coincide with that, so not only do we have students that are that are just scoring off the charts and teachers just putting in a tremendous amount of effort to make that happen, but what we also see is things like this, right? Our classroom belonging that we've paid so close attention to, for really like almost a decade now, it continues to go up. When we talk about those classroom teacher relationships that they have with those students, that's a number, again, that continues to grow, so important. All all across the board, our students not only are doing well academically, but we see them showing up for each other, showing up for their teachers as well, and really having a positive classroom experience, so we think that's a really valuable thing to to celebrate in addition to what we see there. When we look at involvement across the board, we have ninety-five percent of our students participate in at least one co-curricular activity during their four years here, and that's a number that's kind of ticked up a little bit, it used to hover right around ninety percent. So, we're at ninety-five percent right now, and ninety-one percent in a club during their four years, so you can kind of see the number of students that are participating, again, just great things that are happening. If we take a look here at our PWC data, so the check-ins of of students going to the PWC, a great facility for our students to take advantage of, you can kind of see here in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, when we launched, we had twenty-eight seventy, two thousand eight hundred seventy unique students. Last year, we were at two thousand seven hundred fifty-one unique students attending that. And you can see our average check-in per student is in that sixteen to eighteen range, which is absolutely amazing to see. That facility is just awesome and slammed all the time. And if they're not at the PWC, then they're at the library. But I think, Tony, you pulled this data, and I think it's really interesting to take a look here. In in an era where we think maybe the library isn't as utilized as we would love it to be, I think the data says otherwise, so if we look at total checkouts between electronic and print versions, if you go back to twenty-one, twenty-two, we were at twelve, almost thirteen thousand, and last year, we were at about twenty-one thousand checkouts between print and electronic versions. And then, seal of bili literacy, the highest percentage in Illinois. We have two hundred and sixty-four seals that were awarded last year, one hundred and ten commendations and new language offered as well. And then, just an example of another place where students show up, if we look at an area where many schools experienced declining attendance and declining effort and and, you know, from our from our students, we look at dances, you could see Dave knocked it out of the park last year with sixty-three percent of our students attending homecoming. Again, if we could look way back into twenty fourteen, we were just about forty-nine percent of our students. And then, love to report on our summer school, we know that's almost as big as many schools that exist year round. We had two thousand nine hundred eighty-eight students participate in summer school last year, and if we look at our grades, that 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 map looks very similar to what Tony showed earlier, and I think when you look at that information, you'd be like, oh my goodness, are they just just go to summer school and you're gonna get an A, and I think what it does is those summer school teachers that teach use the same philosophy, the same type of grading, the same type of feedback, the same instruction, they work in social studies, work on collaborative teams, just like we do during the school year here. So, this is exactly what we would expect to see in in our summer school data. So, you have way more information in that book in front of you? But we would be happy to field any questions or thoughts, yes, Ron.
For context, evidence-based system, are you seeing more districts adopt that, both like locally and then as you spread out nationally?
Since COVID, yes, after after the, we got back from COVID, there's site visitors come and ask and come back and adopt that model. Now, with that said, it's not a new model, it's competency-based education's been around forever, focusing on agency's been 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 around forever. It's just been slow to adopt because of the educational change moves glacially, right? So, it just takes time, but those those principles that we use have been around forever, so schools come and visit, they adopt a little bit. So, since COVID though, it's it's focus on agency is in using evidence and competence has taken off, so.
I would, I would add, this is a little bit of an oversimplification, but I would add that you know, if if you just use standards-based as a synonym for synonym for evidence-based, we just, we think there's a difference. But just think standards-based grading, most elementary schools in most states use standards-based grading, right? What you're seeing is a significant shift in more and more middle schools going to standards-based grading across country, all fifty states. And you're starting to see more high schools slowly, but surely move to standards-based grading, so it's been the common practice in elementary schools, it is a widely accepted practice in middle schools, and it's a growing you know, kind of movement in high schools, and so, yeah, it's pretty, it's great, you know, in the sense that we're getting away from the old you know, what's a seventy-two percent, you know, it's just some average, you know. For for our kids here, in our consortium, a student will, from any district, at this point, will never have had a percentage-based points, which, you know, we think is a good thing, because then, instead of chasing points, now that to add, you know, add up a whole bunch of points to get a grade, now they have to demonstrate and learn, which is a significant difference, you know, so I think, yeah, you're seeing it spread throughout the country, I think for the better, yeah.
It'd be fascinating to see there's, the ones that are adopting, if that's triangulating to the other standard-based scores that you guys are seeing, whether they're doing it.
It is, there's some studies we can send you that demonstrate that that's happening.
Yeah, if you wanted, I mean, happy to send you stuff tomorrow.
Yeah.
Is there, at the site visits, that's a good opportunity to hear about what's going on elsewhere. Are people making the connection between the high participation rates that we have and our activities and our events and sort of that that engagement in school versus the grades and the, you know, is there anything that sort of ties those two things together?
I think it's interesting, cause uh, thanks to Wendy, we re-revisited how we set the tone for the day. So, Troy and I have an opportunity to to start the day with the site visitors, and we do talk a little bit about that you can have academics, academic achievement and student wellness happen concurrently, it doesn't have to be like you have this or that, yeah, absolutely.
It seems like one would promote the other.
Yeah.
You know, if you're engaged and you're feel part of things, your grade should reflect that, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And we've got one more.
Yeah, we do.
If any board members ever wanna come to a site visit, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great thing.
Exactly. Yeah.
We do have all of our new teachers do it, I think they.
Is that this time?
Uh, no, they've already, they've already done their two.
Um, so, I know we're running short on time, but there's a lot of really good news in here. Just to be fully transparent, the couple data points that I know a few of us get frustrated by are some of our attendance data is not where we'd like it to be. So, those are things that Eric and Troy and Wendy are working on, and we're thinking through some different ways to kind of reverse a post-COVID trend of kids feeling like, eh, maybe I won't go to school. So, then you can see that on page fifty-nine, you know, especially.
And something that they're doing is that parents, families should be seeing now in their email inbox is some reminders and also just tracking attendance for their their students, so they're more in the know.
So, we're starting with some soft, softer reminders, but I do think, I hope, that within the next few months, we're gonna roll out some pretty, some more significant incentives for kids to come to school.
Reminders of how important attendance is.
Yeah, so.
Well, I know that you don't have a ton of FaceTime with parents, but is this something that you're getting in front of, because like, the piece about students being absent on exam days really always strikes me, that like, it's a tactical decision, and it's one made it's not independently by the kid, right, there's parental involvement with that.
And that data is. That that data is included.
Yes, so, is there, like, when you are interfacing with families, are you taking those opportunities to address this gently, kindly?
Yes.
Yeah, and then.
And that's where our counselors knock it out of the park, cause they, as they're making connections with families, they feel much more comfortable having those conversations with families, saying, hey, we're seeing a trend, let's talk about it.
Yeah. So, we're we're working on it, and I think, you know, we're trying to roll out some changes to our practices, anyway.
Some new parent communication tools too, we know that are, we're working on those too, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen, awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And by the way, this is probably the best-looking student achievement report we've seen in a while, so, thank you for that, so. Okay, moving on, this is just a first reading for board policy updates, we won't go through them in depth tonight, Reem and Wendy and I had a chance to go through them last week, and Reem, if I'm not mistaken, most of these are not substantive. A lot of wordsmithy and and little things here and there, so, feel free to review those and then reach out to Wendy or I if you have any questions before next month. Normal allotment of personnel items, though it's in the report, that will be part of consent. We will not need an executive session following the meeting. And in Sean's section, we talked about the audit at our pre-meeting, that'll be included in the consent agenda. And then Sean, the first item for you is approval of twenty-six, twenty-seven student fees.
That's correct, thank you. We are recommending only one change to our fee structure for the next school year, and that is the summer school fee, and that would take effect in the summer of twenty twenty-seven. And that is an increase just to keep up with as we so eloquently pointed out, the amount of students that are taking our summer school program. And to make sure that that is a break-even analysis, it doesn't cost our taxpayers anything, it's basically just you pay for it, and then all of the fees that are collected are used to offset all of the expenses. So, tonight, we are recommending that the Board of Education approve the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year student fees, as has been presented.
Can I get a motion to approve, please? So.
Second.
Any other questions for Sean on that? Okay, Reem, can you please pull the board?
Ross, can I hear Ben Youssef?
Aye.
Sao?
Aye.
Porson?
Aye.
Iyer?
Aye.
Iwol?
Aye.
Nope.
Aye.
Excellent, our next agenda item is something that we discussed in October, this is an intergovernmental agreement with the Deerfield nine-one-one services, this is a opportunity for our first responders to really zoom in on, and I use the word zoom, not as in Zoom phones, but to really geolocate where the problem exists and they need to respond to. This does not cost the district any dollars for the first year. If we choose to engage in this software, in this technology, after the first year of the grant, we don't have specific costs because. we don't have specific costs, because Deerfield nine-one-one said that this is something that they would like to engage in cost sharing, not only with us, but with any other organizations that are utilizing this, because the grant is quite large that they paid for, for this particular year. And if we choose not to, we do have an opt-out without any costs or financial issues for the district. So we are going to recommend that the Board of Education do, does approve this intergovernmental agreement with the Deerfield nine-one, nine-one-one services pending attorney review. We just want our attorneys to review the contract one last time before we sign.
Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Second.
So this could go on without any cost to the district?
It could have gone on.
Potentially?
Yeah, because there's a potential for additional dollars in a different year. I just felt it was better to do it as a action item as opposed to a consent agenda, you know?
And do we know yet what, what is it caught like?
It could, it could be about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a year. So it, it's minimal dol, minimal dollars in terms of our budget, but not anything.
Right. Could have a big safety case.
Correct.
Any other questions for Sean? All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstained? Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item is a first reading. We have a couple of them, three, two of them, to be exact. One is in relation to the two thousand twenty five tax levy, which was discussed at our finance committee meeting earlier. This is for funding for the two thousand twenty six, twenty seven school year. And you can see that the figures that we talked about in, at the board meeting with the CPI of two point nine percent, we will probably end up right around three percent in total new money available to the district. But that is, in fact, a first reading, and there'll be more information forthcoming. The second item, very similar, this is what they call a supplemental levy for our bond and interest fund. That is to ensure that the amount of money from the community is enough to pay the actual debt service. Again, more information will be forthcoming in the mid-meeting memo as well as at our next meeting. And then I have two informational items. Actually, I'll do the first one. Eric, do you want me to wait till the superintendent's report for the other one?
No, you can do both.
Um, so one is an informational. Every year, the state of Illinois has a school maintenance grant. It's a fifty thousand dollar matching grant, meaning we have to spend money in order to get the grant. This project that we are looking at, we've taken part in this, by the way, for the last several years that I can remember. This year, we have some lighting upgrades that we can switch from what I'll call a quasi LED, which is basically just a bulb that goes in the existing lamp, to actually an entire lamp system. And the benefit to having that is it actually will tie into our building automation system, and therefore allow us to turn it on, turn it off, if it pops on during the day. So we'll be able to reduce our energy costs, not a ton, but every little bit helps. So that's a grant, it's just for the board's informational purposes.
And let's hold off on that.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yep, yep, I'm sorry.
No, it's all good.
Yep.
All good.
And then no FOIA's?
No FOIA's, I don't know what happened.
Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Can you please pull the board?
All right, um, Sao?
Aye.
Horson?
Aye.
Tyer?
Aye.
Iwol?
Aye.
Nope.
Aye.
Ross, not here, Ben Yosef?
Aye.
Okay, and then you'll see in the usual allotment of information in the superintendent's information report. Thank you, Jamie and Reem for pulling that together, some things that maybe Logan didn't cover, some important board dates, ELC news and update, so there's that. And then we have three additional items for you that are all really more celebratory. The first is that we have a little gift for you, that's for Grace, this is for Ronnie, Parag. So our very, that's Don, that was Don. Our very own Lori Feinsimer was the lead author with our u, with our usual crew on a new book about wellness. So I was hoping that Lori would be here tonight for us to celebrate her, but next time you see her, if you could congratulate Lori. We all contributed, but nowhere near as much as Lori really was the lead author in this book, and she did an amazing job. Really kinda highlighting the good work that's happening, not only here at Stevenson, but different places around student wellness and resiliency, so it's pretty cool. One thing that we just wanna note, and I know I say this each time we share a book with you that we've written here at Stevenson, just as a reminder, as authors, we don't take any royalties from our books. The royalties go straight from Solution Tree, which is the publisher, to our foundation. So they don't even pass go, they don't even come to us, and then rewrite them a check, they go straight to the foundation. I wish I could say it was in the tens of thousands of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars. But suffice it to say that we've got a few of these books now, and my wife, who's an educator, hasn't read one of them. So the foundation is not making huge dollars off of our books, but I think there are some educators who find them to be valuable, and at the very least, it's a good exercise for us. So super, super happy for Lori, she did an amazing job, and the fact that she took the four of us bozos along for a ride, it's pretty fun, so it was great. So that's the first thing, so Lori's not here, but if you could celebrate her when you see her next time. And then Sean has some good news as well.
Yep, so every now and again, we do win some awards, and I'm happy to say that we actually won two. So the Association of Architects, so White Company, our architects, decided with our blessing that they nominated the Patriot Wellness Center Edition for the Educational Division, which is K-12 higher education. And it is based on not just what it looks like, but it's always based on the performance of the addition or the building from an energy standpoint, from a, you know, indoor air quality standpoint, from how it's benefiting students, how we're making use of all of the spaces, not just the main spaces. And we are happy to announce that we did in fact win the Educational Division for that award, so you can take a look at it. But not only did we win that, but then the organization takes a look at all of the awards that were presented in the various categories. And based on the value that's provided to students, we won the Project of the Year for the Patriot Wellness Center as well. So all of the hard work that went into planning for probably about eighteen to twenty-four months, and then the building, and finally, the opening of it, paid off in a little reward. So congratulations to everybody for all your input. Thank you for that input and hard work, so.
And just to, to eliminate any anxiety or frustrations or infighting among the board, each board member can take those home for a month, display them.
There's, it's not like the Stanley Cup, you can't drink out of it, there's no drinking out of it.
Right, and then we'll, we'll just. We'll just rotate it among the board members, so don't be angry, it's gonna be okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes.
Gary, would you like to go first, or? And then final celebration, our very own Mark Anischeck, last Friday successfully defended his dissertation, so congratulations to that guy. Super happy for you.
He really likes me, so.
You wanna present it?
No. But congratulations.
Congratulations, Mark.
So that's it?
And on there, on in front of you.
Oh, sorry, you, you, all of you, thank you.
It's celebrating on Saturday, whether you knew it or not, it was National Board of Education Day. For all you did. Thanks, Sam, for putting the key thing together. Great holiday vote.
All right, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.